Good evening, I'm Les Leinbarger, Executive Director of Communications for NACADOTCHAS ISD. This is a special meeting of the NISD Board of Trustees, conducted remotely using the Zoom app because of the ongoing COVID-19 crisis. Today's open session is being recorded and will be shared afterwards on the district's YouTube account. I am now turning this over to NISD Board President Pam Fitch. Ms. Fitch?
Thank you, Mr. Leinbarger. Appreciate you. Good evening. I hereby call this meeting of the NACADOTCHAS ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. A quorum of board members is present. President Pam Fitch, myself, Vice President James Montoya, Secretary Mindy Winslow, Lea Beth App, Reverend James Irvin absent today, Dr. Tyrell Roman, and Mr. Farshid Niramand. On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Kim Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting using Zoom software, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will have that opportunity. If you would like to provide a comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference, please follow the instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The Zoom software does allow for people to view and interact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at t o m a at o a g dot texas dot gov. We did not receive any requests to address the board tonight. So we will move directly into the budget workshop. And I will kick it over to Dr. Trujillo to lead us.
Thank you, Board. We're excited to have the opportunity to present this study, this budget to you in the process. And we've spent, and I'm not going to say we, I know Lisa has spent a tremendous amount of hours putting this together for us, and we want to first tell her, let her know we appreciate the work which she's put in presenting this to the board this evening. So collectively, I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Barbour, and that way she can take us into the session.
Right. Good evening, President Fitch, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Trujillo. So I have a PowerPoint that is just basically talking points that will appear on the screen. But you also have documents in your board book that go into much more detail. And the first page in the board book is our agenda for tonight. So we will be following the order there. Alright, so the first item up are the economic factors that are affecting the district. So first of all, we have the COVID-19 virus that has really thrown us into a reactive mode, which we are trying to get out of and to be proactive. But the COVID-19 virus has caused many in our community, outside our community, many people to become unemployed or working less hours, which has the result of, a possible result of that they aren't able to pay their property taxes, which turns around and affects us because that is a big part of our funding. We also have parents that may have fear of exposure for their children, so normally we can have a good prediction of who's going to show up, but we may find that we have parents that don't want to send their children to school. We also are going to have to be faced with purchasing medical supplies such as masks and gloves and thermometers and possibly death shields and many other things. And then also, we have employees that may not feel comfortable returning to work, whether it be fear or underlying health issues, you know, who knows what that could be. Another major concern is that we're faced with social distancing with our students. And currently, we have basically 22 students in a classroom, and that can't be accommodated with six feet in between each child. So where do we put all these children if we stick with the six feet distance? Some documents also would like us to do 10 feet. Yeah. Our buses, they are recommending that you have one student per seat, which would then mean we've got to put more buses on the road. Again, I mentioned the, we would have to have smaller class sizes if we have each child six feet apart, so we've got to have an adult monitoring these children in these other classrooms, wherever those classrooms may be. And then we have potential outbreaks coming, that may be coming in the future because they are saying that this isn't over. So we may need to adjust our calendars. And we may need to go develop hybrid lesson plans, whether it be face-to-face or online. But if we do go to online classes, whether it be temporary or long-term, a lot of students don't have devices or internet access. So that's another potential expense that we are looking at having. So another thing that's affecting us is the oil price war. And what has happened there is our mineral values have dropped dramatically, and that affects our, that has affected our property taxes. So we are, I have budgeted to have lower tax revenue this next year. And then finally, House Bill 3, which was passed last year. House Bill 3 provided a lot of extra funding for us. And a good portion of that funding was, we had to use that to give a significant raise to our teachers and other staff. Well, what has happened with that is you give that increase, that increase is ongoing. Now we're facing a year where we have decrease in funding. Well, there is no relief given for raises that you have to continue even though your revenue has dropped. Another thing that House Bill 3 brought into place was, in the funding formula, we used to use prior year property values for the funding formula, and now we use current year values. And the question was asked in our new board orientation of why they did that. Well, I found out why. Well, it's because prior, if you use, well typically, your property values rise every year. And if you use prior year values which are lower, that means the state has to kick in more. But if you use current year values which are typically higher, the state kicks in less. So it was a saving mechanism for the state. But they may be kicking themselves this year because we're looking at, at least we are, NACADOTCHAS is looking at lower property values. The House Bill 3 also compressed our tax rate, so we are, our tax rates are going down for MNO. And because we are using current year values and the compressed tax rate, that combination, the state calculates our tax rates, and we won't know what that is until June or July, later this month or in July. So we have to adopt a budget not knowing what our true tax rate is going to be.
So Lisa, let me pause right there and ask you, that's interesting because that's, I'm understanding you to say that's a new thing where we don't calculate that rate, correct?
That's correct.
Do we still have to approve the rate?
We, you adopt, we adopt a budget in June with a proposed tax rate. We always come back in August and adopt the actual rate. Well, we, in the past, we've always known what, that those rate, that rate wasn't going to change. That's not the case anymore. So what we, this may be different than what we adopt, what we adopt in August.
So the scenario here is basically the state sets the rate, and when we adopt it, we're just going through the motions because we can't change it.
That's right. Any other questions on the economic factors that have we've been facing this year?
I have a question.
Okay.
So we can't change it because the state adopted, but can we change the budget? Can we amend the budget later?
Oh, yes. You amend the budget every month.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Normally, what I bring to you, though, they're pretty immaterial changes. This may be a material change. I also want, I meant to start off with this, says, I don't build this budget by myself. There are many, many, many people that work with me in building it. I get a lot of input from different areas and so this is a lot of people's budget. So the budget assumptions that we used this year, you can go on to the next slide. We built the budget giving a 2% flat increase for, I say, most employees. We'll get into that a little bit later, why I say most. Normally, property tax collections, I use a 97% collection rate. I'm using a 96% collection rate, just to be conservative because of so many unknowns. I calculated it, well, I did, I shouldn't say I calculated, I received the values from the CAD and mineral values dropped. I'm using a tax rate of $1.5, $1.547 for MNO, and a tax rate of .245 for debt service. Now, this is our first year to see that debt service is going up. We've had a two-year reprieve from when we adopted. I mean, yeah, when we voted on the bond. So the, we had two years that we got to keep our tax rate at a lower value. But now it's time to raise it. I budgeted at an eight, with ADA of 5,675 FTE. That is a drop of 90, about 95 students. That's what I used for the funding. But when you just, when you just roll our numbers up from one grade to the next, our enrollment increases to $6,281, I mean, not dollars, students, which is an increase of about 95 students. So I use the drop in ADA for funding because that's how the state funds us, is on our average daily attendance. But I use our enrollment for staffing so that we have the correct amount of teachers for students, maintaining our sizes. And then there is a drop in investment income because interest rates are so low that we're not going to see the income that we have for the past several years. Any questions on our budget assumptions?
I have a quick question. On this enrollment, if some of the students choose not to come to the school for schooling, and we still provide them schooling, will we still get that rate while they're being taught at home?
The state has told us that they will maintain our funding. Now, what, as far as, if, you know, if there aren't at home, that may be a new mechanism for taking attendance, and I don't have the answers to that. I don't know that anybody does.
Yeah, the Commissioner has communicated that right now, they don't have a plan for ADA, when to start in the fall. That's something we're going to be working on developing. The numbers that you see that Lisa's presented there is based on ADA prior to COVID-19. And so when we start off the new year, we'll have to see what we come up with as a state to see what we will do, what we'll do to maintain those numbers and see what those numbers look like.
Thank you.
Yes. And because of all this unknown, we may be bringing you a budget later on for a major revision.
No stress there.
No, no stress at all. Alright, so I would like to turn it over to Mr. Whitaker for the compensation plan, which should have come to you under a separate document.
Yes, thank you, Lisa. So everyone should have a copy of the compensation plan within the board book.
Give me a second. Let's see. Has everybody been able to find it? I'm scrolling.
It's all the way down.
There it is. I'm there. I'm with you. How about everybody else? Like, it's page 33 is at the beginning of it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Alright, is everyone there?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, President Fitch, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Trujillo. So this evening, I have the pleasure in presenting a draft, proposal draft plan of the 2020, 2021 Compensation Plan. So if you flip through the pages, this overview again, nothing has changed on page three, overview of the salary system. Page four is general staffing information that is updated to reflect the current number of positions that we have in the district. And the pie chart, which reflects the percentage of those breakdowns of the overall total number. On page five starts the compensation plan recommendations. Nothing has changed on this page. Page five just highlights the pay rates for our substitutes and what those look like for a substitute or a long-term subs, for paraprofessionals and for teachers. Page seven starts the revisions of the teacher, librarians, and nurses pay scale. Within this pay scale is a 2% flat increase for each step. There you see what the daily rate would be, also as well as the masters included, what they will make for a masters-level teacher who have a masters degree. So those are 2% increase for those on that scale. If you flip over to, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, before we leave that page, Mr. Whitaker, I see there on page seven that it, it says that the stipend for bilingual classroom teachers is $4,000. Is that fairly competitive within our area?
Compared to our size and various ranges, but you will normally see 3,000 as you know, last year, we increased it. So this will be the second year we've had it at $4,000. And so the increase helped us be more competitive. Kind of get over a jump over of Lufkin. Lufkin had theirs at $3,000, and so they prompted the increase last year to move it up to $4,000.
And who is included in the stipends as far as staff for NISD?
There are a number of different stipends, but the stipend in particular in this page are only for bilingual elementary classroom teachers.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Are there any more questions on that page? Okay. If we move on to page nine, there's a new hire guide for counselors. Again, we said it's a 2% increase for our counselors. And you'll see in the column, there's the noted for elementary and middle school counselor, and then for high school counselor with respect to their number of days. If we move on to page, there's any questions on page, page nine. If we move on to page 11, you will see the athletic stipends there. And of course, the changes that we have for proposal recommendations on that page, on page 11.
Why the reduction with some of those?
Sure, yes, ma'am. And so when we looked at the reduction, when we looked at the market data, the market study, it does bring us within market. We did find that some of those positions were a little bit over market. But as you know, within a lot of our coaches here within the district, they do teach, excuse me, do coach two sports. And so that does allow with increase as the assistant coach, it does allow it to be a little bit more marketable as entry-level teachers and things come in to be an assistant coach and make that a little bit higher stipend as an assistant coach. And as well as some of our coaches who do do two sports, they look to hopefully make a $500 increase if they do do two sports. Compared to, they would have made, you know, $500 less with the same rates. And as it does, of a column over there where it says grandfather, we wanted to keep those coaches who are already currently in place to continue to make that certain amount, that same amount they have been making during their time with us here in NISD. And so they would stay. And so the new amounts would only roll into those coming into the district, taking those positions.
And through attrition, the higher rate would go away.
Yes, correct. Yes, ma'am. And another big change is the middle school stipend, breaking that up into, into the different, to their respective sports and paying that out that way. And respective paying one overall stipend, it will be broken up into different stipends depending on how many sports the middle school coaches, coach.
These, these stipend amounts were developed from our TASB study on our salaries. They looked at stipend as well. And then the middle school, what they found was we had some coaches, they all got 7,000, but some coached one, some coached two, some coached three, three sports.
It was inequity in the amount of coaching that we saw, because we're working with them and doing our market study research, starting from the beginning of the year and submitting the data that we did find that, that some coaches were coaching two, some coaches were coaching three, depending on various campuses. And so they found in their market research, it is better to have it broken out that way to pay by per sport than to pay by just one lumped stipend amount.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir.
Looking at, for example, excuse me, track boys and girls, you have listed head coach, assistant coach. Are there the only two coaches or more than two coaches coaching track?
There are more coaches, the coaches. So you have one head coach, but you do have more assistant coaches. You just have one coach.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The wonderful thing with this layout is we're honoring the, and trying to maintain the staff that we do have by grandfather and those individuals that are here. But as we move forward, we want to be more competitively marketed with these surrounding districts that we're, that we're competing with. So I saw this on the TASB report as well.
Yes, as former Athletic Director, highly encouraged to keep your coaches happy because constantly changing, rotating leaves a wrong impression in a coaching fraternity that many coaches would not coach. So it's good, it's good to take care of those coaches. Yes.
Yes, sir. Are there any more questions about the athletic stipends? Okay. On page 12, you will see our URL campus stipends. And those are paid out to the different level, high school, middle school, for the different URL, particularly academic events. And, and so you see only one addition is the URL coordinator for elementary that was included in the proposal for this list of stipends. We found that was a position that needed to be added, just to coordinate all those URL efforts across our elementary schools. On page 13, you will see the academic CTE education stipends and various other stipends included as well. These stipends did not change from last year. Those amounts still stay the same.
Are these also based on market value of stipends for these positions?
They're not included in the market study research. When I was going through the study, these are just what we found, just to be competitive and attractive of what positions that are kind of relate to. But some of the, a lot of these positions are not included in the market data, but those ones that are, yes, sir, they are.
President Fitch, this area here is one thing that I'm addressing with our, with our team. If you notice on your academic and career technology stipends are there, we don't have anything that's, and it's surprising to me, we do have critical areas of instruction. Your math teachers, your science teachers at secondary level. When the study came out, it is in draft form. We, we do have the possibility and have, Dr. Crispell, for example, we've lost some good candidates to surrounding districts because of a stipend in the academic. We've done a great job providing stipends for athletics, a great stipend for all of these other support, but the rubber meets the road at the instructional side of our campuses. A great stipend for all of these other support, but the rubber meets the road at the instructional side of our campuses. We have an obligation. To make sure that we can find the best math teachers and the best science teachers and and see what we can do to maintain them. We are sitting at a zero stipend for any of our academics.
Wow.
Lufkin is at zero. So if we wanted to compete with Lufkin, then we would be able to do something with stipends. And and maybe be able to close the gap a little bit. Of course, I've also had this conversation in detail with Dr. Hill and we do have other areas that might be a critical. Criticality for the district. It might be an English teacher. At the high school or at the secondary level. It may be a local teacher, but we do have some, we have a struggle in finding these really critical teachers in the instructional side. And when we don't have any emphasis on a on a stipend on this side of the academic, other than department heads. Department heads are listed there, but that's a little bit different than. Our teachers that we have in the math and sciences. So as we plan forward and we start looking, we've got to be very conservative with our budget. But we need to explore that possibility with regards to the academic side of it.
I'm glad to hear that because I know I know sports are important, but academics are more important.
Yes, yes.
We need to make sure that, you know, the teachers we're having are doing a great job of teaching our kids, so.
Go into a little bit more depth, if you don't mind, on the the police certification. It has a range. I'm not used to seeing ranges on on this. So what does that reference?
Sure. Yes, ma'am. Different types of police certifications that you can acquire from a basic to intermediate to advanced into masterpiece officer. So those depends on the different levels of certification. That police officers can acquire. And so that range is based upon depending on what level our police officers acquire, what they have, they make their certification. So it promotes growth in our police department to acquire our police office to hopefully reach that the masters level, master level status within their certification.
Would it be possible to kind of spell that out in here instead of having the range to kind of show what basic, intermediate and master looks like?
Sure. Yes, ma'am. I can do that. Yes, ma'am. Are there any more questions about those academic and CTE stipends?
So this may be a little basic question here on the on the CTE stipends. I'm looking at that and thinking, does that mean? Are our CTE teachers paid on the normal teacher scale?
Yes, ma'am. And we also were working to try to address that because as we get to most are aside for two. That we're working to bring them back on to the teacher's scale. And so but. So once we get all that cleared up, yes, ma'am, our CTEs will be included on the teacher salary scale as well, all of them.
Oh, I just, I'm looking at this and I had a question. Um, you have bilingual social workers at 2,000. And you have the bilingual speech therapist at 3,000. Is there a different, what is there a different, how do you determine that?
That's kind of what we have had in place. That's not to say that we can't look more in depth and do some more research on that bilingual social worker. Stipend compared to the bilingual speech with their speech pathologists, excuse me, stipend. I can get some more information and get back with you on that.
All right. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Are there any more questions? If not, we can, if we move on to the page 14 starts the administrative professional employee. On 15, you will start, you will start to see the pay grade one, two and three for the administrator and professional employees. And the respective positions that fall within each pay grade, the only additions or. Changes are made from here on out or changes to the maximum and the midpoint for each pay grade. Page 15, you see those positions and those. Those changes to those pay grades. And page 16 also includes the list of pay grades with administrative professional employees.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, sir.
When we say medium, minimum midpoint and maximum.
Yes, sir.
How do we position those in those categories? Based on years of experience, years of being in the same neck of the ocean as IST or what?
Sure. Yes, sir. So we have a calculation that we do based upon years of experience with those particular positions, depending on where you will fall at. On the on the minimum midpoint and max scale, depending upon your job duty and your job position. You fall within either 10 month, 11 month or 12 month position and then it's calculated upon years of experience to where you will fall at on that range.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So page 16 concludes the administrator professional employees. Page 17 starts the clerical and instructional aid employees. From page 18, you will see pay grades one through three and again, changes within the maximum and the midpoint.
I also have a question. Some of our. Some of our secretaries sometimes have to stay and work overtime. I know as athletic secretary, you had to come very early and stay late during the football season to sell the tickets. Are they getting extra paid as well? Or just a flat rate?
They receive compensation time.
They do? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So page 18 and 19 includes the again, page one, pay grades one and three on page 18, pay grades four through seven on page 19. For those positions that fall within the clerical and instructional aid employees. Page 20 starts our hourly salary schedule employees include our hourly and manual trade employees. There you will see on page 21. Pay grades one, two and three and the specific pay grade for our bus drivers. And pay grades bus drivers only. Page 22 concludes finishes off that pay grade. Four, five, seven, four, five, six and seven, excuse me. And there is an additional pay grade eight on page 23 for those hourly manual trade employees. Again, only changes on these pages are the maximum and the midpoint. And on the last page, 24 starts the section of our technical support, our. Technical support employees on page 25, you will see there are two respective pay grades for those employees.
I'm going to back up. I'm a little behind you, I'm afraid.
No problem. Yes, ma'am.
On on page 19, I see where we've removed PMS specialist from pay grade five and pay grade six. I'm having trouble finding where they landed.
Sure. Yes, ma'am. Sure. So when you, on page five, and again, I do apologize, I should have started this off of the red or the strike throughs and the blues are the new new additions. So again, excuse me, I apologize for that. But on page six, you will see what those have consolidated to just be a specialist. And so that is on pay grade six. So. You will see that it falls just as a specialist standalone.
Is Mr. Whitaker still on? This is Dr. Grom.
I am, Dr. Grom.
Yeah, you were, you mentioned something about CTE teachers that were not on a teacher pay scale. Was that going to happen in this school year? It's going to start in September?
Yes, sir. That is the plan. You know, it was a late revision that we wanted to do. So I wanted to, again, to bring it back to the team, just to clear but clear things up and hopefully something I can bring to you. Before we adopt a comp plan, but it shouldn't have to me, it shouldn't have that much of an impact to move them on to the teacher's scale. And so if you're particular, it was in pay grade one on page 15, a couple of those positions that we wanted to move over. But I wanted to speak, work with the team just to get everything outlined, just to make sure budget impact wise, to make sure we can move those teachers over.
Okay, so there's only two of those CTE that will be affected by that.
Correct. Yes, sir.
But now we're hiring like one or two more CTE teachers. They'll be hired as teachers, not in something else.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're changing and making it fair across the board for all CTEs from in the future. They'll be considered as teachers.
Correct. Yes, sir. That is the goal.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Finch, President Finch.
Yes.
Dr. Grom's point with regards to CTE, we are in the process of pulling through and doing a complete audit with our CTE. To make sure that we've got the correct and area of the funding. We've got, we've been doing a tremendous job. With what we've been doing here, but we want to make sure, especially with the expansion of our CTE program and direction we want to go. With regards to CTE, we want to make sure that we're maximizing our resources from the state with regards to the funding source. Because there's a percentage of it that can be utilized for staffing. And then there's a percentage of it that can come back and go to the general fund with regards to using it. So. We want to go ahead and see where are we with that so that we can. Unilaterally address it across the board through all our CTE programs.
Mr. Whitaker, just to curiosity of mine, all the CTE teachers are Texas certified teachers, correct?
And so with the addition, so you bring up a good point, Coach Bashi, is that. You know, they are in their respective fields, no matter what they may. Are certified and you know, for them, maybe cosmetology, it might be law enforcement that we have teaching for us. And so kind of what we have in place right now is that, you know, the state allows those teachers to be considered as teachers. And if you are giving instruction. You know, you are, you are teaching. And so that's why the thought was to move them to the scale. So they might have a true SPEC type of certification. But they may have a respective certification with their state agency, such as like cosmetology, such as our law enforcement who can teach our students.
Yes. Thank you.
To your question there, they are industry certified. They do not have, most times it's difficult to get the pedagogy behind the instruction. Or even the classroom management. So there are some things that we have to do to make sure our CTE folks. Understand the the pedagogy side of of teaching because they do provide industry certification or industry experts with regards to it, but. Full fledged Texas identified teacher educator, they would not be on the on that measure. They would be industry certified. Especially in those areas like diesel mechanics or in or construction or whichever direction we're going to go with those. So.
Mr. Whitaker, let me apologize. I think you may have covered this a little, a little bit and I may have missed it because I was a couple of pages behind you. But I'm looking kind of on page 21, 22, where we were changing some of those midpoints and some of those maximums.
Yes, ma'am.
My my first question, for example, on the bus driver, I think they're at the bottom of page 21. We're reducing the midpoint and the maximum there. Are we grandfathering in existing employees that may already be above that? For example, the maximum.
Yes, ma'am.
What happens to somebody if they're currently making more than what you've listed there is the maximum?
Those are errors. We need to fix that and get that back.
Yes, ma'am. I just saw that looking at that, that is an error. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, because the max is about $14, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So we have to rerun those numbers and and get you an updated version of those numbers.
Okay. Page 21, the bus driver maximum is 1836. Well, the new maximum is going to be 2% higher.
Okay. So that's just an error. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And I assume then that would be true because you go on to page 22 and you've kind of got the same things where your midpoints are actually lower than your minimum. So those are just calculation errors.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Good observation.
Yeah, let's see. Okay.
That's just about every page it looks like.
For the rest of, yes, ma'am, for those 21 through 23. Yes, ma'am, as well as on page 25, I believe as well, so.
All right. So that'll answer my next question. I was deeply concerned about our police officer pay, but. Rest assured that that's just a typo. We'll get that fixed before we adopt.
Yes.
Oh dear Lord. Yeah, I just got to the police sergeant.
You may lose some police officers that way, don't you think?
Yeah, I was about to say, oh my, how are we recruiting any police officers?
Are there any more questions about the draft proposal? We'll make sure we get those those fixes corrected. And so when we revisit again, we'll have some some numbers for you, updated numbers.
Yeah, I tell you what, Mr. Whitaker, it would sure help me if once you get those. Corrections put in, if you could email us a copy of the the draft that we could kind of take a closer look with the with the corrected numbers.
Okay. All right. Any more questions? All right.
For the matter of record, Mr. Whitaker, when you do that, let's go ahead and drop another copy in Board Book. That way we've got it there updated.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Good job, Mr. Whitaker.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So I'll I'll take back over and we can go back to. Les, if you can go back one screen. And on page four of your board. We have. I did several scenarios of what different raises would look like. And that's what page four is reflecting. So you can see our employees that are paid out of local funds versus other funds. And it's broken up by class. So you see teachers, librarians and RNs. So before an increase was given, their salaries ran. Over 24 million. And then I did a 2% flat scenario, which would for teachers, that would cost $446,000. To give a 3% flat was $658,000. To give a 3% flat was $680,000. To match Lufkin, 1.9 million. And to beat Lufkin.
When you say match Lufkin, do you mean match the rate of increase that they're giving, or?
Match their current salary schedule, assuming they gave a 2% increase. A lot of assumptions there.
Yeah.
To beat Lufkin, although this is, seems strange to be, Lufkin is actually cheaper, because we are closer to Lufkin in our older or more senior teachers. They beat us pretty more significantly on our young, on the younger teachers. And so to beat Lufkin, we didn't have to increase as much, because the younger teacher. And then also played with the increasing the health insurance, so.
And when you say increasing the health insurance, do you mean increasing the amount the employee pays?
No, the amount that we pay.
Okay.
Yeah, so as you can see, we look at it from a lot of different angles, and the budget I'm presenting to you, though, is a 2% flat raise. As you can see, it would be very expensive, not affordable to do anything above that at this time.
But 2% would be affordable?
The 2% is affordable.
And does that include, are you looking at doing any changes to the health insurance cost?
No, not at this time. That doesn't mean we won't look at things in the future, because, again, I've been bringing up that we have so many unknowns, and once we get schools started and we have more information, we may be bringing you something that is more significant to give out. But at the time, at this time, we feel like we need to be very conservative in what we adopt.
Sorry, I have smoking on my wall.
Are you cooking?
No. President Finch?
Yes, sir.
The, the recommendation, I know the commissioner is holding and recommending among many districts at many levels, that we'd be very conservative. There's actually quite a few districts that are not even looking at a pay raise because of the, of the unknowns. But I think our teachers have done a tremendous job with COVID-19 and everything that we've gone through, and we are lagging behind based on the study again. And that study will, that, that, that line will only widen for those districts that are getting their, their teachers a percentage. I think it's very conservative with a 2% raise, telling our teachers that we appreciate the work that they're doing. But this allows us also to look at possibilities of doing things after we get a better number. In addition to this, there's, for instance, we have some districts that are looking at a very conservative percentage, and then talking about a bonus maybe during the December, January timeframe, based on the values that come in. So those are all, there's ways that we can make this very beneficial for our teachers and for our staff. So all that being into play, we are being very conservative, but we're also being very, we're taking a risk and, and also telling our teachers, we appreciate the work that they're doing, and we value everything they're doing and making sure that we can retain our folks. Today, I believe we, Michael was telling me, we've had about 50 folks that are made a decision not to return back. This is well before the July deadlines. And so we want to make sure that we can communicate this early enough so our staff can say they're, they're sticking with us, and they're not gonna move, move on away from us, so.
Dr. Trillo, are those 50 people that are planning on leaving, is that including retirements and people that are just going to different jobs, or?
There, there's about nine of those or so that are retirement. And based on what's occurring right now with COVID-19 and the fear factor, not knowing the unknowns that's gonna happen as we start the year, I'm anticipating that within the next 12 months, folks will be making decisions on which way they're gonna go, if they're gonna go ahead and proceed with a retirement as well. But Michael, am I correct, it's about nine or 10 folks?
Yes, sir. Right now, we have nine folks who are retiring, 45 teachers that are, have resigned, and then just other, one principal and two other professionals.
Now, President Finch, I'm asking Michael and Mr. Whitaker to look into those numbers to see where are we losing them? If it's really, because we, we have a discrepancy with our entry level folks coming into, to the business. So are we losing folks that are at zero to five years, that are moving away, they're coming in? We take a big hit with Houston and some of our surrounding districts, because they will not take, Michael was enlightening me that they will not take zero experienced teachers in Houston. So they'll come to NACADOTCHES, they'll work with us for two years, get experience, and then they'll move on to the bigger markets. So we want to make sure that we, if we're gonna invest in our staff, we want to make sure we keep them.
Yeah, I would, so those 45 teachers that are, that are resigning, how many of them in, in the years of experience? That's, I'd like to know that. I mean, I think it'd be important to know how many years of experience we're losing.
Yes.
One-year teacher or two-year teacher?
Dr. Trillo, Mr. Whitaker has provided me with that data today. And what we see is that the majority, the vast majority of those teachers that have resigned are between that zero and five-year range of experience, most being at the zero to one-year range.
I kind of anticipated that when I heard the numbers. That's why I was asking him to get those numbers. And in light of what Houston is doing, and some of these bigger districts that are around us, Lufkin, we want to make sure we can stop that from occurring and address it within the, the, the future here in that.
And healthcare, we have the same issue with healthcare workers, too. They come out of school, work here for a couple of years, and then they go to the cities. It's kind of a kickoff for the careers, unfortunately, unless we can convince them to stay.
Any other questions?
Just curiosity again, are we able to replace the retired teachers in a short period of time?
Coach, can you repeat your question?
Yes, sir. I ask, are we able to refurbish our teachers basically, or replace them? Since we have lost 45, that's a large number. And what? I'm sorry, what, go ahead, sir.
No, unfortunately, what happens if, and this is why we want to make sure, that's why it's critical to say we've got the 2% raise, is folks that are out there start looking for jobs. And when I talk to Mr. Whitaker, or, excuse me, Mr. Martin, we, we pick up the folks. We, we don't want to pick them up late. We pick up folks that are late, then they're left in the pool, and we want to find the best candidates and bring them in. I was talking to Dr. Crispoe, and for instance, at graduation, while we're waiting there, he hired somebody, but the person backed out, because they were gonna get a stipend over in Alto. And so that's, and that's what we've got to look at, is how do we hold on to folks that, because they'll get, they'll continue to get calls. So our goal is to try to catch and cast out and catch the best qualified folks early on, so that we can get them and onboard them with NACADOTCHES.
Are we getting applicants now because of the pandemic? Or, or are we, is it slowing down for people to apply to try to get a job for the fall?
I'm gonna defer that to Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Martin.
Sure. Yes, sir. We are getting applicants. You know, numbers are still not where we want them to be, but we are getting applicants. Nonetheless, you know, we definitely talk post and market positions throughout various medians and applications. And so, you know, we are getting applicants. Well, like Dr. Trillo said, we definitely want to continue to get the best of the best. And so, but principals are interviewing, and principals are making recommendations to hire.
President Finch, Dr. Trillo, if I can go back to Coach Nirman's question. Just in comparison, last year, we, we hired on about 77 teachers. So I feel confident that we'll be able to have a full staff by the time school starts.
Good, thank you.
Even with the pandemic, you think?
Yes, sir, even with the pandemic, I think.
Right. If you move on to the next slide, this is just the cost of the raise for other funds other than our general fund. So let's move on to page five of your board book. This is a proposal that I brought forward. We have two highly paid individuals that are, have many, many years of experience. We will replace them with a lower paid individual. They'll still be within, you know, our compensation plan and everything, but you just typically, typically don't hire somebody that has 30 years of experience. You don't hire, replace someone with 30 years of experience with a 33-year experience person, if that makes sense. So we're gonna have some savings there. Not quite enough for what I would like to do, but we have some, based on that TASB study. And we're, we're picking apart that TASB study, because we're not really implementing it in its full measure. But when I saw this, I wanted to rectify it. We have these individuals that are listed here that are way below market. I mean, extremely below market compared to our other employees. The one that is at the lowest level is at 67% of market. I would like to give them an additional raise. It still wouldn't give that to 100%, but it would get them to, the first one, it would get her to 76%. The others to 88%, and bus drivers, it's gonna vary depending on the bus driver, but that, but their raise would average out to about a 7% raise for them. Currently, I think their low, their minimum rate is $12.30, I believe. And the market rate is 15. I'm talking about a minimum amount, and this brings them a minimum to $14.30. So it doesn't address it completely, but it gets them a little bit closer for our lowest individuals.
This got a little more granular, President Finch, because we were looking at individuals that there's some disparity within, within some folks that are in the organization. And so, to be fair with this, one, once again, another conversation had with Dr. Crispoe and visiting with our principals, we, that's what we're trying to address, is that disparity, get to granular level, so that we can get them within the, within their, their market in the district, that they are within that range. Now, this percentage, when Mr. Whitaker adjusts the, the previous document he had, remember, the previous document he was presenting was at a 2% raise. These folks, this is why when Lisa Brinch had mentioned a while ago, most people get a 2%, these folks would, when you look at it, they'll get beyond the 2% in order to get them. They're so, so far below the market in the district, that we've got, we've got to make some other things to make things right for these individuals that are committed to NACADOTCHES and the success of our campuses.
I personally believe in it, and I think they're hard workers, and they do a lot of things that need to be done, and they do a good job.
Yes.
I applaud that as well. These, these are important positions, and absolutely, we need to, in my opinion, get them, get those taken care of.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
All right. On page eight. My numbering system is off. Where it says, "Teachers stipend comparison." Here we do have, from the TASB study, this is just a snapshot of how some of our stipends compare. So we, if you look at the first one, it's master's degree. We give a $1,000 stipend, and that is equitable across the board. Subject area masters, there was only one school that gave a stipend there. Math and science, the amounts vary across the board, but we, we do not offer stipends in those areas. Special education, we do offer stipends, and that is, we take more of the lead there, although it's, it's across the board. And then again, you look at bilingual, we offer the 4,000. Most are below us. There is one above us. So right now, our budget does not include a critical area stipend for math or science, or, you know, we only have it for bilingual. That is up for discussion.
Let's say, is, is that something that would be achievable this year? I know that we're in a, a tight year, but to me, it's extremely important, especially that, that secondary math and science. So what's your gut on that? Can we, can we pull it off?
President Finch, we, we did the numbers. We found out that we have 31, 31 teachers in the, in the math and 32 in the science, that this would be impacting.
So let's, let's say we gave, so that's 31 and 32, and we gave, what's the middle of the road, $3,000? That would be a $189,000 minimum hit.
Okay. Well, that surely we can, we can find that somewhere, would be my thought. And how, how do the rest of the guys, the board members feel about it?
I can say, as an athletic director, I tried to hire two different coaches, one in physics, teaching physics, one math. After negotiation, they left us, and when I questioned why, they said they found a job with the stipend for the teaching field as well.
Yeah.
Dr. Grom, and I support supplementing or giving extra through the science and math.
It's always hard to find those teachers, so yes.
I mean, if you think about the math we had in, in the high school, we basically had to do that program. Do you remember this last year? I mean.
We had to pay extra for, to have a virtual teacher.
Right. I don't remember what that was, but shoot.
Well, and it seems like every year for the past several years, we've struggled filling spots within math and science at the high school level.
You know, what would be interesting to see is, if we did that, I, because the budget year is different with Lufkin, I, I could see them doing the same thing, because we'll be able to pull candidates that are willing to come because of that, and it, it makes the salary that much more attractive.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Martin, didn't we go to, through two or three physics teacher or chemistry teacher last year, or year before?
Yes, sir. Coach, I believe you're right. And the name of that program that we had to purchase last year at NACADOTCHES High School for the math was Proximity.
This, Dr. Grom, and another aspect on this, I think we'll see. This, Dr. Gromen, another aspect on this, I think we'll see better performance in our students on their testing. So for college entrance and for national merit, and that reflects well on us and reflects well for our students. So they gotta have good teachers to do that.
Yes, qualified.
We also lost teachers too that they stem, I think, as well, so maybe we could get some of, some of them back.
So just to put in my two cents, I, I feel like we could find it. I, there's just a scary pit in my stomach because of this unknowns.
Yeah.
But the part, but the optimistic side of me says to go out on faith and do it. But also be aware that we may be facing something that would be unpleasant in the future. If we're prepared to do that, then we can give a stipend.
Lisa, when you say you, what happens in the future, what, what, what could be that would happen that would cause that to be an issue?
If we didn't have enough money to continue, we would possibly be looking at layoffs. But that is, that is unknown.
The unknown is the state hasn't really given us a formula with regards to ADA. How are they gonna formulate the average daily attendance? We do have students possibly that, no matter what we do, they're not going to feel safe to come back to school. So that's gonna be a number of kids that are gonna be there as well. Those are some variables that are unknown, but also we do know that when the dust settles, Nakadoches has had a history with Lisa's leadership and the, as her CFO. I know she's got a, in a pit of her stomach, is something there that's laying, but I, I know that this, this district has done tremendous with regards to managing its resources and its funds when it comes to the budget.
I guess the only concern I have from the standpoint of dealing with this pandemic is that I've been reading some stuff about how they were talking about how school budgets, you know, money, funding was gonna be cut across the board throughout the United States, including state funding and federal funding. How is that gonna affect us, even though I know that we try to have a good budget? How, how would that affect, I mean, that's gonna affect us, obviously.
Yes, that would affect.
Thirty-three percent decrease in the, in the, you know, in the funding for schools. I mean, that, that to me is kind of, I mean, I'm just, I'm, you know, we don't know. That's the whole thing, we don't know, but it's something that we need to think about.
I would, you know, I, I agree, and I understand it's, it's a risk because of all of the uncertainty now. But I also think it's a risk worth taking and investing back in those classrooms. We're talking less than two hundred thousand dollars. And honestly, if, if we have to go in and make some cuts, I feel like that we could find some cuts in other areas that doesn't, that would maintain our classrooms and continue to grow. And honestly, if, if we're, if, if we're true with our vision and we want Nakadoches to have, you know, a, a first-rate academic experience here, part of that is recruiting first-rate academic teachers in here. And that's gonna require things like stipends.
I mean, shoot, seven, eight thousand.
Yeah, so that's part of the going on faith, that is my opinion. But, but I would also be remiss not to caution you as well.
Also, I'm worried about the lower grades, the elementary grades with this social distancing we may have to do. Are we gonna have to hire a lot of teachers, and are they out there, and would we have the money for that as well?
So you don't have to hire a teacher, like if you have, your class now is become, one becomes two. That tier of record is still over everybody. You have to have an adult with them, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a certified teacher.
A teacher would, and the adult would maintain order.
That is what I understand, so you still have to hire somebody, but they don't have to be as expensive.
Okay, good. Phew, I wonder where they were gonna come from.
I've been wondering that as well.
President Fitch, this is Dr. G. I certainly support your, we can, we can find it somewhere. We've gotta start somewhere building, and I think this is a good time. And strengthen an area that's very vital to the, or not just the, for the students, but the perception of what we're doing. We are building.
And I don't, I don't have any issue with that either, I think that's a good thing. I just think, I'm thinking down the road here, say, for instance, we don't, we get in a problem and then we have to lay people off. Is that gonna be worse to lay, have to lay people off than to give them a stipend? You know what I'm saying? I'm just, I'm trying to balance that between the two things.
I mean, part of, part of looking forward and, and our trends are, we, we tend to lose teachers through attrition every year. And that could be, you know, one way of you, rather than laying off, as a teacher leaves, you don't replace. You know, but you, you have to really plan that situation and anticipate it if you're going to go that direction.
Well, I'll, I'll come back to my attitude is, is if cuts have to be made, the last place we make them are, is, is the classroom. But that's just my.
Thank you, I appreciate you saying that. I, you know, I'm, I'm loathe to bring up experience, but the last two years I taught, I had sophomore students in the pre-AP program who had advanced science classes, and their teachers were not qualified, and it was frightening. And I, I mean, I, I worried that all the adult, the parents would revolt and, you know, because I worry about our reputation. So we need good science teachers and, and math, of course, but it's, science seems hard to find.
Okay. All right, so let's, if there's no more questions on this, we can move on to the next page, where we'll get into the nitty-gritty of the budget. So the first column is our current budget. The second column is what we adopted at, back at the beginning of the year. The third column is our projected budget. At this time, obviously, it will change because we've discussed some things already. So our revenues, we're looking at a one point, almost a one-point-two-million-dollar reduction in revenues. That is primarily through our local revenue, our tax dollars. Going on to the next page, our expenses by function. We've got a balanced budget, our expenditures match our revenues, and you can see there, the top portion is where we're, you can see we're increasing in our functions eleven through thirty-four. Our reductions are in thirty-five through ninety-nine. So think of the top portion as more of the stu, student instruction-related type of areas. Also, on the bottom portion, those reductions, a lot of that is one-time expenses that we had this last year. When we adopted the budget, we had a large number of projects that we took on that we knew would be one-time. That was the whole purpose of it, they would, that we would have them, and then they would go away. Did somebody say something?
I think Michael Peg just.
Michelle, thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, so the most significant one is function eighty-one, those were one-time projects. We still have our priority maintenance funding through the, the bond that we're using. So our, our facilities are continuing to be upgraded. This is not a reflection of a drop in what we're doing, it's just a reflection of one-time projects going away. Any questions on those? Okay, moving on to the next page, we have our student.
I'm sorry, Lisa, I would catch you right at the last minute there. What is, I, I see a fairly significant in, increase in data processing, what are we looking at there?
Okay, so the eighty-one thousand?
Da-da-da-da, let me find it there, data processing, yes, eighty-one thousand.
Okay. We are hiring a consultant to come in that is going to help us revamp our, make our IT better, that's part of the.
Part of that, okay, that makes sense. I see also that social work services had a pretty nice increase. Did you see that, Mr. Montoya?
I, I, I was gonna say I'm very happy with that, but.
That is two additional social workers that will be.
And, and, and that is very good because of the fact that if we're gonna have kids coming to school with all this pandemic going on, we're certainly gonna have to have some more services to those students in the schools, and I, I'm glad they see that. Because, you know, of course, my goal, my goal is, my, my vision is that we would have social workers in every one of the schools, but I'll take two over none, so I'm happy with that.
Oh, it's, 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 we're going from three to five.
Yes.
Good.
Yes, so I'm, I'm, I'm happy. But again, my, my, my goal is, in every school if we can at some point in time, but I'm very happy, I'm very happy with that. Now, these are not the students, these are not the social workers that we have from the grants, right? These are.
No, they are, they are, because the grant goes away, but we're keeping them.
Awesome, that even makes me have a bigger smile on my face.
What, what makes up other intergovernmental, other intergovernmental charges?
That is the amount, the amount we pay to the CAD for collecting our taxes.
Ah, okay.
And now they base that on tax collections, and this was before we knew about the significant decrease, so I don't know if they will turn around and recalculate that.
All right, so that's, that's assuming then the, a, a increase, but not necessarily, gotcha.
Right.
Hey Lisa, there's three areas that have gone down to me a lot. One is thirty-six, and the other one, they're fifty-one and fifty-two. Is there not, is there something that we just quit paying for that made those go down? Was that like a, like a one-time thing, or are we cutting those?
Did you say fifty-one and fifty-two?
Fifty-one, fifty-two, and thirty-six.
Thirty-six, okay, so fifty-one and fifty-two were, fifty-one is our maintenance and operations, and we had some projects that didn't rise to the level of our eighty-one, but they were still projects, they were one-time projects. As well, several vehicles that were purchased.
All right.
Fifty-two was some major purchases, some, a radio.
Gotcha, okay.
Thirty-six was, again, the band bought a brand-new box truck.
Oh.
It wasn't a hundred and nine thousand, but it was around.
That's right.
Thousand.
Yep, I remember, it was big. I remember it.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's all right. That's what I'm here for. All right, are you ready to move on to student nutrition?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so on student nutrition, it is a basic mirror of current year. Except for, you'll see, it looks like in salary and benefits that, well, I mean, it doesn't look like, it shows it going down. The reason is, last month in the board meeting, you, you approved a budget revision of a hundred thousand to cover their extra expenses from COVID. So if you take away that hundred thousand, it's really a fifty-thousand, fifty-thousand-dollar increase, which is their raise.
Okay.
And then.
And let me ask a few questions right here. I'm, I'm, my understanding is through this year, our funding wasn't affected due to, to COVID for our food services, because we were able to, thankfully, they worked really hard and were able to get meals out to, to kids. Are we expecting any issues on federal funding next year? Or because of all of this stuff, or are we expecting it to just kind of maintain where it's at?
Again, that's an unknown, that's an unknown.
We don't, we haven't heard anything yet.
No. We basically ran the food distribution we had during the COVID, like a summer feeding program. In fact, that's what the funding was, summer feeding. We, we don't expect that it recouped everything, and that's where we are going to apply for other grants to cover the deficit.
Okay.
Moving on to the next page, we're looking at our debt service. So the increase is in our revenues, is our taxes, and that's because we are increasing the tax rate. Our revenues, even after increasing the tax rate, our revenues do not match our expenses because that is a planned drawdown of our fund balance. We're still living off of the fund balance here. And that is very purposeful in what we've done.
Very good.
Moving on to the next page. As I said, we collaborate with many people, and several positions were asked for in the budget. We did not grant all of them, but these positions were granted. Most of them, they are using their state comp ed money to pay for it. So House Bill Three increased our state comp ed funding and decreased our regular funding. You have to spend your state comp ed funding on serving at-risk students. There is a particular, there is a list of what constitutes an at-risk student. And so that's what many of these represent. So they're either gonna spend it on an, on a person, or they're gonna spend it on stuff. So it, so if we like, what I, I guess my point is, that fun, that funding, like if we're looking at the first one, Restorative Practices Coordinator, which is a teacher, that if they didn't hire that person, they would still have to spend the money on stuff.
And are any of these positions previously part of the grants that we received at Carpenter and Fredonia that we're absorbing?
Not these, no.
Okay.
These are all brand-new positions, did not exist before.
Okay, so the Reading Instruction Coach at Carpenter.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that one, she asked to be able to keep that position. She asked for several positions. That one was approved for her to keep.
Okay.
Let me, so before I speak out of turn again, let me make sure there's not any others in there.
I see Interventionist at Fredonia, I don't know if that would be.
That, that is additional.
Okay.
That appears to be the only one, Ms. Barber.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the next page. Moving on to the next page. Last year was put into place a plan for spending funds that fall into fund balance. So basically, spending our unspent funds on one-time projects. And that's how we were going to fund our computer, teacher computer replacements, our white fleet, our uniforms, and band instruments. With this plan, rather than building it into the budget initially, is that if, for some reason, one year you don't have a savings of falling into fund balance, then you, then these, then that year are not funded.
That makes sense.
Go ahead.
No, that, I said, that makes sense. Is there, and I'm sure that this is almost a rhetorical question, but is there anything else that can be moved over that are one-time expenses?
Well, that, that's part of what the, the other possible draws is. Where I have other possible draws, bus purchases and a time clock system, those were not, those are not the normal, those are, if we have a huge savings drop into this year, that we could possibly pull out of fund balance at a later date.
Okay.
It's been about three years since we've purchased any buses, and our time clock system is very antiquated, and it's on its last leg. I have to be determined because I have no idea how much it costs. So this, this year, the 1920 was the first year that this was put into place. We purchased band uniforms for our band, and we replaced seven vehicles. And we replaced half of our teacher computers. In 2122, we will replace athletic uniforms. In 2223, we'll replace band instruments, and then we start back over. So you've got a cycle there. We typically have savings that fall into, unspent funds that fall into our fund balance, because when we budget, we budget as if every employee has been hired and works the full year. That never happens, though. We always have savings from, someone quits early, or they're not hired immediately, as well as just they don't spend all their campus funds that they get sometimes. Some, some principals are good at spending every dime, and some leave on, money on the table.
Has it really been three years since we bought buses?
Yes, it has.
Wow. That seems like just yesterday.
President Fitch, I found out, we have buses out there. What was the year that we talked about? We have 1998?
Yeah, yeah.
Still have some 98.
We've been, we were working on that a few, we've been working on trying to get some new ones out there. That's why I'm just sitting here going, I can't believe it's been three years. Wow.
This is Dr. G. Some of the school districts of other people in Leadership Tasby, they apply for grants for school buses. And sometimes they get the whole bus, a grant for the complete bus. I don't know how they do that, but maybe we can look into that.
Many years ago, at my previous district, this was in California, I don't know if Texas has the same program, but we were buying, not hybrid, but natural gas-powered buses, and the grants basically paid for those. So it may, they may, that may be what they're doing. I don't know.
As we, President Fitch, as we build the robust program with our CTE program, we can also see how we can provide for our students with internships through the white fleet, or even through buses as well with transporting our kids, as we continue to build the internship opportunities for our students. So there's going to be ways that we'll be able to address some transportation. And Dr. G, that would be great to find out and get more details about how we could do that as well with grants.
Any other questions? If not, that concludes our, my presentation.
Dr. Trillo, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am. I appreciate the, the conversation. I really, really am excited about the opportunities that we're looking at our teachers. Overwhelmingly, if you were to summarize our conversation today, we're looking at the primary purpose of what we need to do to retain teachers, what we need to do to make sure that we're rewarding them for the hard work that they're doing. And I even heard our very own President Fitch say, if we're going to cut, the last place we're going to do that is in the classroom. And I can make you that pledge as superintendent. The work is done in the classroom, and everything else is extra. So we're going to pledge ourselves to do what we can to provide our teachers with the greatest school district that can, that they can work for and not make a decision to leave us. And for those that have left, remember, we pledged to pull them back if they were amazing teachers. If they weren't amazing teachers, maybe they've improved, and we'll take them back as well.
I heard of one today who's coming back. Hey.
I'd give you a standing ovation if we were in the boardroom.
Amen, amen.
Board members, any additional questions or thoughts that you'd like to share?
I'd just like to say that this is, this is really a good conversation that we're looking, you know, it's good to be able to do this kind of stuff. I would rather be doing it in person, but given the fact that we're at where we're at, I really appreciate everybody, and I appreciate everybody's comments. And I think this is what makes our board so good, is that, you know, we think together, and we work together, and we decide together. And so, and administration, the same thing. Thank you so much. Very appreciated. Very appreciate.
And before we leave, I just wanted to ask, do you want to have another special board workshop before we adopt? Or do you, are you comfortable with me making changes we discussed, and we adopt those at our next regular meeting?
What's your wheel, board?
I, I'm good with. Only if some of those unknowns are known.
Yeah, if you don't know the unknowns, then.
We, we won't know.
Hey, Lisa, I just wanted to say, you know, we're going through budget preparations at the hospital right now to get ready for our hearing. And so I can certainly appreciate all you've been through to put this together, and then to have us come back and ask you to do one or two things. And thank you to all your folks. I know it takes a team to put this together, and I can appreciate the hour. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. G, adopt and amend.
Or amend and adopt, maybe?
I'll do both. Amend, adopt, amend.
Yeah, there you go. All right. Hearing no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that we adjourn.
We have a motion for Mrs. Winslow. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I think that was Mr. Montoya.
Yes.
Correct. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you all so much for your time tonight. I believe, if, Dr. Trillo, we have another meeting next week, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Next Tuesday. Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought. All right.
We'll see you again. Bye.
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 Bye.